Oh yay, the YouTube video, yes.
And that's where they go, wasn't it?
Watch myself fumble and fumble.
Yeah.
Turk, can you add the pledge to the agenda?
There it is. Can I? I can. I never, yeah. Do we, is it okay?
We typically do it for city commission, but for other commissions, we typically do not do the...
Why?
Because we've always done it that way. So.
Don't what?
We've always done it that way.
Okay, so that's enough. Okay. Is it enough? Or do you want, we, we...
I prefer that we do. I don't know why we would.
Do we have a...
Yeah. The flag's here.
Yeah. Sure, let's do it. So, let's start with pledge allegiance. Right. Pledge allegiance, we can signify...
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Yeah. Okay, we'll do a quick roll call. Start at the end, I think.
Okay, we'll go in alphabetical order. Andrew Howard. George Davis. Jonathan Posh. David Jackson.
Here.
Matt Fein.
Here.
And Joe Rascala.
Here.
Scott Dinas.
Here.
All right.
Next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, March 26th. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to take a look at those. Does anyone have any comments?
Move to approve.
Second. Minutes are approved. Our next item is public comments on non-agenda items, so does anyone of the two people sitting out there have anything they'd like to say? No, okay.
This isn't public comment per se, but I do want to recognize, do have one new member, alternate member here tonight, Janet Deech. She's still being on boarded, so she's not eligible to sit on this, but she has graciously agreed to sit and watch, just so she can see how we do our business here.
And it does stack this a little bit, because now Greenwood's got two people in the house. Mark Street. All right, excellent. The next item, election of officers, which I feel like we just did like last week, but let's do that again. So we start with the chairperson's position. I currently sit in that position. I'd like to continue it, but I don't know if anyone else has an interest in it. All right. So, how do I go about doing that, Jay? Just...
So we need a motion to confirm you as chair of the ZPA for the 25, 26 fiscal year.
Yep.
Move to confirm.
I'll second that.
Excellent. Thanks, guys.
Congratulations.
Hey, I don't know about that, but yes, I'll take it.
I would still, I would still do a formal vote, just to make it official.
Yep.
We had a motion, we need a vote, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct. So we need a vote.
All in favor of Andrew Howard remaining chairperson? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. The ayes have it. Next position is vice chair.
Yep.
Sorry? Yeah, vice chair.
Correct.
Currently serving, who I should know the name of, but I'm, yeah.
David.
So.
So again, we need a motion to confirm Mr. Jackson to the role of vice chair. If the board is, unless someone else would like to serve, step into that role.
I motion to confirm. A second.
Okay, take a vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Jackson continues in his role. And the last position is treasurer.
Actually secretary.
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 I kept, I keep putting it just... Treasurer, secretary. Who...
It's Jonathan. Sorry, it's Jonathan.
So, again, do you want to continue that role?
No, Jonathan Posh.
Oh.
He's not here.
Not here.
I'm sorry.
All the more reason to...
So what do we want to do here?
So, I, we assume he is still interested in serving, so if you'd like to make him, have a motion to appoint him again as secretary, we can do that. If it turns out he's unable to fulfill that role, we'll be back with somebody else.
Okay, I'll motion again.
I'll second.
Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that carries. I do apologize, we did do this recently, so I actually did not recall how we shifted all the positions, so.
No worries, no worries.
Here we are. Next item is our public hearing for case 2025-05. Advocate is Mike Bronson. Property is 2727 Reed's Lake. And he is looking to have a variance for a new home for a setback of 51.2 feet, where 58.2 is required. I believe Jay's going to come up and kind of walk us through that.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So as Chairman Howard has mentioned, we're here to hear a request for a front yard setback variance. This property is at 2727 Reed's Lake Boulevard. There is existing house on this property, as the applicant's drawing already is, already showing here. The intent is to demolish this house and build a new house on this property. I know the applicant has some pictures of his own to share. I'll throw a couple of the ones I have printed out here. And they're all, these are included in your packets as well. So, the two main issues that the applicant is requesting the variance related to is related to the shape of the lot. This is at the corner of Reed's Lake Boulevard and Hoden Pile Drive. And also the topography of the lot, particularly on the north side of the lot. Based on what the calculated front yard setback is required to be for this lot, I may express some concerns that to meet that setback, they would be encroaching or infringing on some of the stronger slopes on the north side of the property, which is basically this area here. What this graphic is showing is the footprint of the home that they've devised while trying to meet the required front yard setback. In their estimation, this would not only potentially cause some other non-conformities, particularly related to the setbacks on the side, but also extend a good way into those slopes on the north side. So what you're seeing in this drawing here is basically their request. This is the footprint with the 51.2 foot front yard setback that they're requesting. This would fit within the building envelope for all the other setbacks, and also would not encroach as far into the north side of the lot as currently, as in their attempts to keep a conforming front yard. To quickly run through the five standards of review, first is their practical difficulty. Again, they are citing the shape of the lot, which is noted because of the way Hoden Pile meets Reed's Lake Boulevard at that sharp angle. That does create some interesting angles at the front of the property that push the building envelope a bit further back than maybe otherwise would be seen. And again, also the topography, particularly on the north side. There are some other significant slopes on the property, particularly at that corner, however, because most of those fall outside of the allowable building envelope, those aren't necessarily as relevant here. So just as a point of reference, when we are talking about topography, we're, for the most part, talking about the hillside on the north side. The north side is higher than the rest of the lot, so it does slope down from north to south. For those that aren't fully familiar with this property, that is generally how the topography here works. And again, in the packet, there's other graphic examples of all this.
Jay, I was looking at your diagram here in the packet and, and on the overhead, and I was kind of having a tough time making out the red lines and where the building exceeds the envelope. I was wondering if you could just indicate that on, on the drawing?
Sure.
With a pen or finger or whatever.
Yeah. So the red line you're seeing here would be the allowable building envelope. Get my drawing tools out here. So essentially, they're going from here to here to here and then all the way there. Whoops, I gave my free hand. So. So that's essentially, that's the, the envelope. It's these corners here in this example that were...
Infringing.
Infringing on the, on the Hoden Pile side. Potentially some others, minor little deviations on the west, east, the west side too, but those are the most noticeable encroachments out of that envelope there.
Okay, thank you.
Standard two stating that these practical difficulties, these practical difficulties were not created by the current owner or previous owner. This is maybe not as relevant here, because this is intended to be a tear down and a rebuild, so if that is indeed the case, that would eliminate any existing non-conformities, essentially give the applicant a clean slate to work with in terms of the area of the lot. Authorizing, the third standard, authorizing a variance would not be contrary to the spirit of this chapter. We just defined what the established front yard setback means. Essentially, it's the average of the existing front yards of the homes within 200 feet on the same side of the street and on the same block. So for that reason, we only consider the houses 200 feet on the west side. We don't consider any houses further to the west, outside of that 200 feet. We don't consider any houses on the other side of Hoden Pile. The general reason for that is because, once you get outside of those areas, generally speaking, we're potentially looking at completely different characters in terms of how houses are designed and how they are developed. So that type of radius is designed as sort of the bubble to define what is the immediate character in terms of front yards to be aligned to.
I know it's an average, but just out of curiosity, what is the required front yard setback for this district?
Normally, it would be 30 feet.
30 feet, because I look down the block and I see one is 28.8, one is 41.9, one is 58.6. So there's quite a variation as you go down the street. But I know, I know you take the average.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just curious, yeah.
Standard four is a non-conforming structure, lot or use of the property shall not be itself considered grounds for a variance. I would note, we did look at some, outside of the 200 foot bubble, just to see what else was going on in the street, and we did see that, particularly on this stretch of Reed's Lake Boulevard on the north side, there are a lot of other lots that have some of these stronger slopes on them, although the amount of the impacts, how the lot can be developed, definitely varies among all of them. We did know one variance further down to the west at 230 El Central that did get a variance for basically the same, for the same request, basically based on topography of the lot and the unusual shape of the lot. That is referenced in your memo to how that came to be, what the variance was for, and that was, the one was granted. We'd also note that in this proposed concept, this would correct one existing non-conformity related to the setback of Hoden Pile, as shown in the drawings for the existing house, that's current setback is 11.4 feet, where 24 feet would be required. So this request would eliminate that non-conforming setback. That being said, it wouldn't necessarily eliminate the front yard non-conformity. It would essentially be pretty close to where the current front yard of the existing house would, would sit. Potentially a couple of feet of difference. The final standard is if a dimensional variance is granted, shall be the minimum necessary to grant relief from the practical difficulty alleged. We have referenced, again, the topography of the lot and the unusual shape of the lot. That being said, we also do note that the proposed footprint of this house is larger than the existing house by a minimum of 13%. And that is before taking into account the covered porch that you see on the, sort of in the center of this footprint. Once you include that, that's adding another 570 square feet to the footprint, then about 38% increase from the existing house. So, you may wish to consider, you know, if in light of that, you know, this does meet that standard of the least amount necessary, or if there's some other modifications that could happen that could result in a completely conforming building, such as, can some of these wings of these houses be reduced in size? Can the garage be reduced in size? Or can some of the other parts of the house be kind of consolidated into more of the flatter part of the lot, where, to the point where the variance request would no longer be necessary? At this point, I can answer any other questions anyone has on this request? Yes.
I thought I had this figured out when I reviewed it. Can you go back to where you were explaining where the setback is encroached on?
Yes.
I, I see it. I, I know.
Okay.
I see that, yeah.
So, for sure, we're talking about these corners highlighted there.
So, my confusion is, is that 24?
That line on the right side would be the 24 foot required setback on that side. That's...
So I thought that...
Commissioner, if I may, Jay, I think Mr. Deans is referring to also the front yard setback.
Oh, okay.
On the required, the, the average is the 58.
Right.
Yes.
58, yep.
Confused on, because that's the one that we call attention to.
So that's...
58.2, and there's only 51.2.
So that's the 58.2 line there, it's, that I've just drawn there, it's...
Right. So, is the encroachment on, where you've identified the circles, or is the encroachment on the other side?
So, and the ideal option, the encroachment is on the front yard setback at 51.2.
Yeah, I'm six feet. Let me, let me go through this.
Okay. So, this is, so this is the version that they're requesting, and this is, this is the 51.2 foot version.
Right.
That's that line there. And I'll compare it, I'll put the, I'll see if I can put the other one side by side on this. So, on the left is with the 58.2 foot setback here.
So this corner, this corner of, it looks like the garage is sticking over approximately six feet. Approximately 51 versus...
So, yeah, there would be a corner of the garage that would be extending into the side yard in the left version, as well as another, there's another corner of the house further back that would also be, you know, encroaching into the...
On the left side there?
The right side too, it's, yes.
Okay.
So the request is not for seven feet on the Reed's Lake frontage, Reed's Lake Boulevard frontage?
So the request would essentially be a seven foot encroachment into the required front yard. It's, is what it would amount to, it's...
The version on the right there, does it have, is that one compliant?
The right, no, the right is the 51.2 foot version with the seven foot encroachments.
Okay.
Neither version is compliant, because the one on the left...
Thank you.
Still, still encroaches into the side yard setback, so.
Right, right.
That's what I was...
And I'm just confused, these drawings are just...
Yes.
Yeah, neither option meets the intent, or meets the zoning ordinance currently.
So there are...
As designed.
Two variances?
No, they're only asking for one variance for the fif, they want option 51.2. That, that is what...
Yes.
They're here for today. They simply gave us the other rendering to demonstrate that if they push the building back, now they have to deal with a side yard issue, and they're going deeper into the steep grade, which is a concern for them. So that's why they're providing this, just to demonstrate what the problem could potentially be if they try to comply with the code.
So the proposed home on, on both of those, is it exactly the same size, just moved?
Yeah, same footprint, just moved into the, the two different locations, it's... Hmm, okay.
My other question is, what is the significance of being a corner lot? With setbacks?
So in a corner lot, the main difference with the corner lot is, on the, in this case, the east side, there would be a much larger setback required from the street. Normally, it would be 10 feet minimum, 24 feet in combination. In the case of the street side yard on the Hoden Pile side, it is 24 feet, period, it's...
So it's not two front yard setbacks then, it's, it's an adjusted side yard setback?
Correct, correct.
All right, got it.
And Reed's Lake Boulevard is, is determined to be the front yard.
Yes.
By our, yeah. So.
Then the Reed's Lake homes are the ones you take the average from?
Correct.
Jay, I'm assuming that there were some meetings between you and...
Right.
And the builder during this, you know, process, and that the setbacks and so forth were explained during the design process of the house?
We have this, we did have discussions about, you know, where the front yard would lie and which houses you would need to be considered in establishing what that would be. And they did, to their credit, actually hire a surveyor to actually measure out all the other two houses you would use to get that average, so. In that regards, they did give us pretty accurate information, we would say, in terms of determining what that would be, it's...
But so, there was knowledge ahead of time what, what their building envelope was going to be?
Yes, I would say so, yeah, I would say yes.
Does that front yard setback, is that a straight line, or does that kind of curve and follow the sidewalk and the road?
It would parallel Reed's Lake Boulevard, the front is there, it's there.
I don't know if your blue line messes that up there, but it doesn't look like it has quite as much curve as the road does.
Yeah, it's, it's accurate underneath.
Yeah.
No, they're nice drawings, yeah. They're well, they're well presented drawings, so. Any more questions for Jay?
What's the minimum structure size for dwelling?
There, there is no minimum size for a single family house, it's...
So it depends on the lot, you know, the setbacks and lot coverage kind of determine how big your building is.
Yeah, I...
Okay.
Yeah, there is no, there is no minimum, though, it's... Just subject to, it's subject to the building code, but there's no specific zoning minimums.
All right. Thanks, Jay. At this point, the owner or the owner's representative can come up and...
Yeah, I'm a builder. Hi, everybody.
Hey.
Thanks for taking time out of your evenings to come here for this. Mike Brosnan with Colonial Builders. And I'm speaking on behalf of Kristen and Dan Lorenz, the homeowners at 2727 Reed's Lake Boulevard. Jay, you did a great job kind of going over all the specific details, and I can, I'm going to kind of expand on some of those too. And, but I just kind of want to lay out a little bit. So Dana, Kristen Lorenz bought 2727 Reed's Lake Boulevard about two years ago, and they have a young family, some dogs, things like that, and they were always intending to build a new house and make sure that this home is their forever home. With that young family, obviously, a safe, good backyard is important to them. And then also, Dan is a retired Army veteran with full disability from the Army services that he gave to our country, so having an open floor plan and an accessible home was very important to him. I do want to address one small thing, because I can hear it kind of coming out, and that is, the original drawing in the original build envelope is not conforming. I think everybody kind of caught that, you know, when we pushed it back to the correct one. So, just a quick little note here. If you look right here at the neighboring property, there is a fully roofed, covered front porch on that house. And so my architect, not, we didn't survey this part in the beginning. When he started this process, knowing all the regulations, he surveyed the houses next door, and the surveyor used the roof on that house because it was deemed, you know, covered porch, because some of the ordinance says it is a one foot overhang. I, I understand what's going to be the change, but it is a one foot overhang that you're permitted, and then that's about it. So obviously, being under roof, they measured to that corner of that front porch, and then they measured the house next to it. And then because that one was so much farther forward, the rules are, it's either the average of the two, because they're within 200 feet, or if the adjoining house is further up, you can use that one. So, they set it at like, that, I don't have that measurement there anymore, because it was irrelevant, we had to eliminate it, but it was somewhere around 47 feet. And as you see on the street, 40s, and even if across the road on Reed's Lake, if you go further to the east, you run into a lot of 30s and 40s. We surveyed a lot of houses just to kind of see where we were. And we built the house behind El Chapo, or Chap, what's the name of that? Centro, El Centro, that got the variance as well. So I'm familiar with that house as well, that's below it, because we built the house right behind it. So, this whole planning phase, which took months, and we weren't involved in, because it was just the client working with the architect, was all based on bad data, because what ends up happening is that front covered porch is, doesn't have a foundation. It has deck posts, it just has a roof. So you have a rule for overhangs, like roofed overhangs, but then you also have a rule that says decks, covered decks don't count. So, all of a sudden, at zero hour, we find out that we have to be 10 feet further back. So that, I just wanted to address why that is like that. We did not draw a house that's on, conforming on purpose. Now that we know where we're at, we want to conform, so we look at it, and we see that the house is not sitting properly, but also we saw what it does to the rest of the area around it. So, I'm just going to kind of walk you through a few little details that we find concerning with the proposed location. So I have, I think I supplied this to everybody, but just an aerial view. So you can see, this whole area here, and even slightly up here, is all high ridge on the existing property. That's 2727 Reed's Lake Boulevard. There's a giant tree up here, which is not in the build envelope, that's not a concern. But all of this is pretty steep on Hoden Pile, with a lot of utilities in it. And then back here, and I'll show you some pictures in a second. This neighboring house at 255 Hoden Pile is set up quite high and has a retaining wall right along the inside of their property line. And then there's a few foot drop, and then there's a very steep drop with a highly wooded and brushed area with high, with good erosion control already. And the existing home being so far forward, it's kind of a fishbowl, because it's set down, but at least you have a tree easement, it looks like, it looks like it's a tree easement. There's like a double line showed on the property, so I'm not sure if that's an easement or not, where the grading between the two houses can kind of be managed a little bit better. So, this is all treed, and it's not part of our build envelope for some particular reason, I'm not 100% sure. Jay would know probably better than me. And then also, we do have a utility pole right back here in this back corner. So, with the new design, or with the new home that they're proposing to build, which is this lovely piece of art right here, property values, all that fun stuff, here's our angled garage, trying to conform to that banana shape that we have on the east side. And everything has to be pretty well raised for the main level because of the big topography changes from front to back. We have almost 18 feet of change from the road to the back neighbor's retaining wall, and then a few more feet past the retaining wall. So we have eight risers just on our front porch, which is uncommon, especially for somebody that's, you know, full disability, but we're trying to connect a few things here and improve the situation for us. So I just kind of highlighted the tree area with the high growth already, stable hillsides, all that stuff. We are proposing about a 758 elevation for the main floor. We do have to drop the garage to around 755, just to make sure that water can still be controlled around the lot, and that we have a nice pole in for the driveway. However, the elevation for that retaining wall in front of it is 765. So, we still have quite a bit of grade change just from the main floor to the back, and we're already sitting about 10 feet above the road and have a bunch of risers to get to our house. And then this green area here shows the retaining wall of the neighbors. I do have a picture of it, it's nothing fancy, it's very... You know, so we have the power pole right here. It's, it kind of looks like a tree, but I have a better picture where it's just power pole back here. And then we have the retaining, which I'm not sure how far it goes into the ground. And then all of this just slopes off with coverage. Few more images, just to kind of show. This is from Hoden Pile, looking into the backyard. You can see all treed, and once again, the house kind of sits down in a little fishbowl currently. And then, this is the example of, well, it'd be back on this page here. Of this treed kind of bump out right here, which all of this is not in our build envelope, but it's also part of our property, so I'm not 100% sure why. But you can also see the grade of everything's just going straight uphill in the back there. So with our proposed elevations, trying to make everything work for this... just wanted to go over a few concerns that we have. Ten-foot-tall basements, this is showing the garage actually, but it's stepped down three feet, once again, 'cause we have that grade from that big hill in the front yard, as well as that shorter distance from Hoden Pile to the back of the house. So that is brought down three feet below our original house foundation, which is right here. And then our house foundation, which would be this one here, we do have a small daylight set over on the west side of the home, just to try to maintain a lower area for some light into the lower level for egress. And then, the remainder of the house is all full foundation. And when you're digging a foundation, obviously, safety is a concern, so we have our digging site. We have the fact that, in order for safety, we have a slump factor that we gotta take into account for safe digging. It can get worse depending on the soils. Usually, we're running into clay and pretty messy soils around Reed's Lake, so it should probably be towards the minimum slump factor there, which we talked, you know, just kinda showing an example, the minimum would be around seven feet for a seven, or eleven-foot-tall wall, where it can get up to fourteen feet if it was like sandy or something. And here's where we run into our hardships. This is the proposed setback, the fifty-eight feet, and our current drawing for the build inside of it. You know, doing excavation, we are basically eliminating all of the treed areas in this particular location.
Can you shift it over a little more?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Can you shift?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Gotta look up every once in a while. Yeah, so we end up getting into this treed area, which is not as bad, because it's still pretty big with this easement. This is that unbuildable portion of the lot right here. And then we have, back here, we get within almost ten feet, or right around ten feet of that retaining wall, which is also set on the neighbor's property. And then it jumps up that small distance, two or three feet on the neighbors. And then, over here, we will have to drop down the foundation a little bit to get that garage, so we can come in off the road. But when you do something like this, it's hard to see these measurements on here, but we are about, you know, if we do that seven fifty-eight, the proposed height and elevation for that, all of this hillside is above that. And to code, I have to be able to slope the dirt away from the foundation, which is pretty much impossible in this little area. And also, we kinda trap all the water, 'cause now we are pushed tighter to the east, tighter to the north, and anything that comes back off this hill, it doesn't have any ability to easily get rid of water control, as well as the fact that we're undermining that retaining wall on the neighbors, taking away a lot of growth. So our proposal to move it forwards, even though we're moving it seven feet, so I'm just gonna use that to change the page, because we're moving it on that angled line over here, sliding it seven feet along that build envelope on the angle, the foundation moves about thirty feet away, and our build envelope moves, you know, another ten feet away from that retaining wall, and it preserves ten more feet of that treed erosion zone. And we built it at the seven fifty-eight, which is in line with this path that kinda runs right around here in terms of the natural topography of the land, so we don't have to touch anything in this woods. Any waters that can get in the backyard can easily be controlled by rolling around the backside here, or can easily be graded down to this side too. Not to mention, you know, no one really wants to push their house closer to the road. There's no privacy. You only do it if you have to. So, we're doing this as a necessity, but also it does have some added benefits of giving us a little bigger yard in the back. And, of course, it does make the house that was originally drawn also conform, just using a minimum of seven feet. So, those are the concerns and the issues we're dealing with. The other parts we talked about in terms of the odd shape, yeah, we lose about seven percent of build envelope just because of tight corners and rounded edges that this lot has. So, and then if you consider the hillside being a unbuildable place, which it should be, 'cause otherwise we'd have to raise the whole thing, which would make a mess for utilities and all the drainage in that street, then you're getting closer to about twenty-four percent of your property is lost, that you can't even build in, even though it's in the build envelope. So those are the hardships, the concerns. The biggest thing, and I can't get around it, because I wasn't a part of the original, is the fact that the original house, yes, never conformed. We're trying to come up with a solution to that and maintain integrity of the neighbors, maintain the erosion, maintain the water, and make sure that we are providing these people the house they want it to live in forever, so.
I have, go ahead. Well, I have a question about levels. I'm having a hard time understanding the elevations. Part of the rationale for going this route is that your client has a disability, and then there was talk of trying to maintain a main floor home, but your garage is three feet lower than the main floor?
So...
And you showed a side diagram that I was a little confused by. It almost looked like different stories.
Okay, so, there are probably just two right here. So we do have, if you look, yes, there is a second-story loft above the garage, and that is for the kids' rooms up here.
Okay.
And then, all the main living for the master on the main, all those pertinent areas are on the main level, yes. And then, for the garage, the reason, you know, we do have it set down, it's mostly to control that water flow that I was talking about. But when we set it down, I'm trying to find the right picture for you. Here, yeah, this is it right here. So, the driveway is, the whole property slopes down and to the left. So you can see, even though we show seven or eight rises to get into the home from the front steps, with this drop down of the garage, three feet, it's still only four rises inside. So it is limited in terms of the amount. We're trying to kinda counteract it, but we also gotta kinda work with their neighbor to the left, and we can't really raise everything up to do that.
Thank you.
And Hoden Pile, of course, is pretty well established. I can't do much for that.
Look, you've done a lot of work, and it looks like a really nice design. I guess, I have a question. You know, how, if you had been operating with the correct information, how would this be different?
Yeah, I mean, that's a question I've asked a few times, and they're like, well, you know, we don't know, 'cause we currently have what we want, and I don't know if what I could give up, or what I'd wanna give up. And it still goes back to the yard being very important to them. You know, they have young kids, they have dogs, they wanna yard, and they don't wanna ruin everything for it. But I get that, yeah. I can't answer that question, only because every time I've asked it, 'cause I said, listen, they're gonna say, move the garage, take this off. Every time, the answer has been, we don't know what we can give up, 'cause we don't wanna give up anything. This is the house that we wanna live forever in, so. And I've heard that in emails, I've heard it in phone calls, and so.
I'm just not sure that that meets the standards that we have to apply here. I mean...
I, that, I told them that could be a hiccup, but I do see tremendous benefits to doing what we're doing. And I do see, you know, if you look at this, this is foreshadow, and it's just, you know, you gotta play devil's advocate every once in a while, but like, if you look here, this particular property, right here, two houses down. It's not used in our average. It's only four inches farther back, but because the adjoining house was closer, we didn't need to use it. However, you know, on a block like this, this, they could build their house way back here, right? And just because they did that, I mean, obviously, this house doesn't conform already, but this house will never be able to be, you know, repaired and/or rebuilt, and same with this house, you know? It's like, there's, there is a, oh, well, you can do something different, but then somebody does something different, it could ruin it. I actually asked Jay about something earlier. It was a different job. But I was working with him a year and a half ago, and somebody's like, oh, you can't, it was the same thing, front setback. You gotta bring it forward. But it's on Reed's Lake. I'm like, well, isn't the front the lake? 'Cause that's where the front is on all others. And like, no. So you're telling me I could push this house all the way back, and they could have the best views out of everybody on the street, and everybody will hate them, but they could do that. And then every time somebody wants to build, they can do that same thing, and all of a sudden, the lakes just crowded. You know, it's like, yeah, people could do what they want, and we're just trying to keep it to as minimal. I would love to move up to the forty-eighth, like we originally proposed. That had a much nicer backyard, and it had a lot more clearance away from those trees. I do think, in order to do this properly, that height that we're kinda setting it at is the optimal height. It'd be great maybe if we can get it down a hair, you know? But in order to do that, I have to still move pretty much anything forward. And that house that's currently existing is super non-conforming. It has an eleven-foot side setback, right? So if I just said, well...
Once we tear down the old house, though...
Right, so I'm saying, like, the option would be, like, do we just leave this wall? And try to, you know, redo something, 'cause that's what we ended up doing on Manhattan Boulevard, was we left the wall to do that. But it's also a less stable house. I really don't like that idea either. I prefer to build something strong and sturdy that'll last forever.
Well, yeah, but I'm just having trouble, because this is a tear-down. You know, you could've designed a house that didn't require a variance on the property.
Possibly, possibly. I can't guarantee.
Well, you know, it's, there's, somebody decided, well, we want this much square footage. You know, if you, if the yard was that much of a importance, you could've made the building smaller and had a larger yard, and, I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, so I've built high-end custom homes all day, every day, for past ten years, and, you know, twenty-six hundred square feet on the main is pretty standard if you're trying to make sure the master's on the main and that this person can get to the laundry and can get to all the other things, especially in a high-end home, right? Yeah, we could build a four-hundred-square-foot house. No one's gonna want it, and you don't want that in East Grand Rapids. And I'm not saying you can shrink it much, but if you want something scaled and to the caliber and price in this neighborhood, it kinda, it's gonna be big.
But you have to work with the constraints that apply to the lot.
Right, and we thought we were, well, the architect thought he was, I'm just trying to fix a problem and help everybody else out in the process. But I get a hundred percent what you're saying, and I wish I had an answer for you, but, you know, I, I don't currently, 'cause they aren't telling me that there's an answer other than, these are the things we need on this level. I mean, we already tilted the garage to try to squeeze it as close as we could. I mean, that's not a free thing. That's an expensive process to tilt any part or curve something, right? So, we're trying, but...
I have a question. Could you go to drawing A1?
The proposed one, or the one that we would like?
I think both are. The one that honors the Reed's Lake Boulevard front yard setback.
This one here?
No.
The, here? Or the original house?
That'll do, the way that you've got it. So on the, is it up north?
Uh, yes.
Alright, so on the east side then, where the dotted line is, how much of that area, what is the setback encroachment on the side yard in this drawing?
In terms of this corner, with, because you do have one foot of overhang, it is now about two feet. This one is a little closer to three.
Well, the overhang doesn't count, right?
I think one foot of overhang does count, has to sit in setback, I think, right?
There's a one-foot allowance for an overhang, or any evens.
Alright, so what is the, how much of a side yard variance would you need if you push the house back to honor that front yard setback?
Well, basically, it'd be three feet to make this house conform, but it doesn't fix...
I understand.
Yeah, I would say it's three feet, roughly three feet.
Alright.
I'm struggling with the fact that, you know, this is potentially a new build. I went by the site today and took a look at the backyard and the side yards there. Definitely some challenging topography along Hoden Pile there. It looks to me almost like there's a man-made berm, like a landscaping berm. I can't quite tell, but it does rise up from Hoden Pile in elevation, and then, you know, just deep descent down. On the north side, where you're next to the red house, that seemed a lot less extreme. Other than maybe two mature trees there, that seemed to be, you know, maybe less problematic. But again, I'm struggling with the fact with, you know, a new build, it doesn't seem like it would take much in the way of, you know, fairly minor modifications to in fact, you know, meet the ordinance without, without the need for a variance. So that's where I'm at, and I'm struggling with that.
Yeah, I'm really, I mean, it seems like they got here in good faith with the error on the measurement on the other side. And it just seems like we're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole now. If they had used that correct measurement in the first place, I think we would've, which I get the story and all that, I think they would've wound up with something that was conforming. Just understanding of...
I understand, and, but I, you know, I keep, I mean, this is just my personal, I'm like, I'm looking at, you know, this whole stretch of Reed's Lake Boulevard that's in this, you know, picture on page two, and, you know, most of those houses are thirty to forty, and we're being pushed close to sixty just because we have a neighbor that's close to sixty. And the question would be, how long can this game continue, where people just keep pushing people further back? 'Cause eventually, it's gonna run out, and then you do end up with a bunch of tiny houses. And I'm not saying that's in immediate future, but I would hope it's something that we consider, like, there are front setbacks for a reason. There's a minimum of thirty. We're almost double that. We would still be happy to stay way behind thirty. It's just, the biggest thing, and I get it, it's a new house, just redraw it, but that's not something I'm gonna make the call on. It's what these people designed. If you draw a house and you wanted something, I'm sure you'd fight for it too, so. Just like Dan fought for our country.
Unfortunately, our charge is to go by these very strict rules and discuss whether these house, this house in particular, meets these criteria. Although I appreciate some of the houses are closer, and I understand, you know, in fact, if this house that you're building had stayed where it was, and you were building the lot next door, the average would be even closer, right, the existing house?
Yeah, exactly.
This is just a roll of the dice where you are, so I get that, but...
And even this house right over here, I know it's across the street, but this is another thirty-foot house. I'm like, and that's within two hundred feet, but it just happens to have a road in the middle. I mean...
One of our charges is to eliminate non-conformities when we have opportunities, right? And one of our other charges is not to create a non-conformity if we can help it. So we have to kinda go through this list of all the items on here and make sure that, you know, you have to, we have to check yes for every box. If even one box is a no, then the answer is no. So that's why we struggle with our obligation here.
I mean, you've given some good reasons for why the owner would like it this way, but, you know, those are personal choices, and we're still bound by these rules. And, you know, the, the, things like maybe disability, personal disabilities and that sort of thing don't have any bearing on our decision here.
Oh, I know, I know. And, but, I mean, hill stability, erosion control, those are all real things. I, you know, lot inability to build in certain parts, those are real problems, based on the non-conformity of the shape and things like that.
But it just, it feels like you could've, if, you know, but for this mistake, you could've designed a house, or someone would've designed the house, that would meet all the requirements. It's not like you can't build on this lot, just you wanna, you just wanna build it bigger.
And I think that architect actually could've probably built a fifty-eight-hundred-square-foot house and still complied with the setbacks. I mean, judged by the drawings, they're good drawings, competent architect, I think. And the option that you presented where it's fifty-eight point two, it's only a hair over those setbacks on the sides. I mean, there are some simple design revisions that would go, that wouldn't take long to make that work. This is, to me, the easier... This is, to me, the easier solution is to ask to see if you can get a yes, as opposed to going back to the drawing boards and complying. Sorry.
No, no, like I said, I...
I make, so I get your argument. So when, we've had another person come up here, another builder, and say, you know, in East Grand Rapids, you don't want to build a house smaller than this, it just doesn't make sense in this market. That's a valid...
Very true.
Point. But again, with this property, I think you got enough property to do it.
Yeah, I, I know, and, but, you know, those people bought that house for a lot of money, and they're willing to put a lot more investment in the city because they want to be here. And so it also comes back to, they did all those things because they wanted to do it, and they want to be here, and, yeah, they want this house. So it's, it's a tough draw, so. There are legitimate concerns with the lot, shape, topography. I want you to think about all those things because, you know...
Right, but it's a teardown.
It is a teardown. Because the whole other house would be set too, well, not too far forward because it's existing, but the eleven-foot and the current front setbacks are both way further than what we're asking, what we're even close to asking for right now. So the existing house is already closer to both the roads. It's just us asking for one of the roads, and we'll take it off the other by a lot.
You know, the challenge is, this is an existing lot, and these are the restrictions of the lot they chose to buy, you know, so they're going to have to make some decisions, I think, you know?
Unless you guys vote favorably, I'll let you go.
Three-stall garage, I mean, it's, I mean, the argument that they want their kids to have a big backyard, that they're choosing a three-stall garage...
I said it helps. I didn't say, I mean, it's a benefit, yes, but the reason is, otherwise, you're building into the trees, there's no backyard.
Okay, I'm sorry. We won't get into design, we'll stick to the rules. So any more questions? No? So I think that brings it back up to here. Thank you.
I'll invite you all back to the party when we're done building it.
I don't know if the owners will invite us back.
And enjoy it. Can't wait to hear your yeses.
It is a beautiful house, and they're nice drawings, so.
Thank you very much. I did not draw it, but they're great people, and I'm happy to work with them. Hope day. How long will we hear?
What's that?
How long till we hear back?
Well, we're going to make a decision tonight.
Do I stay or you move?
Yeah, you're welcome to stay, just listen to us debate. So we're to come back up here, and now we're going to kind of talk amongst ourselves. I'm happy to start, you know, we'll go through our rigorous process that we usually do, so. I'm just thinking about our five prerequisites. For me personally, number one, that there's a practical difficulty in complying with requirements of the ordinance. I don't think there is a practical difficulty here. I understand that the site is challenging, but there are other houses on, adjacent, that also have the topography to deal with, and they're doing it successfully. I understand that it's wooded, but there are other properties adjacent that are wooded that can comply. And more importantly, it's a teardown, so there's an opportunity to build a house within this buildable zone that would meet all the requirements. For number two, I guess, I mean, I don't know, I have to go through all of them because I just, with one being a no, the others are somewhat irrelevant, but the owner did not create the practical difficulty, other than that he's presenting a drawing that doesn't So authorizing this variance, number three, would, I think, not be in the, would be contrary to the spirit of the code. No nonconforming things on the property that are forcing us to have to do this. And yes, I think the dimensional variance he's asking for, for the plan that he has, is probably the minimum. I mean, that seems reasonable. It's just, I don't think the house itself needs to be, I think it can comply, so that's all I have.
I would, I would second everything you've said, except for number five. I would, I would say no. I mean, it's the minimum necessary to get this specific house and plan in there, but it's not, I mean, the minimum necessary would be zero, looking at the building envelope there, in my opinion.
Yeah, what I'm struggling with is, it seems like it wouldn't take, you know, much to, to get this to comply. Sometimes when I go to print things, they don't all fit on one page, but if I mess with my print settings, instead of two or three pages, you know, I can make it ninety-seven percent, and it fits on one page. And I'm kind of wondering if, it seems to be there might be a solution like that here. I did look at the topography, and that's definitely a challenge, as is the shape, but given the teardown situation, I do think there is the ability to meet the ordinance requirements without a special variance. For number two, I really don't see a practical difficulty, so I didn't see that as directly relevant. Number three, well, we have to meet all five, and I don't see it meeting number one or two. I do think it would be contrary because I think, given the circumstances, we, you could meet this. I can understand wanting to do it that way. It makes, you know, it does make sense, but the rules are what they are, and then the standards are what they are, too. So I'm sorry, that's, that's where I see it.
I'm in agreement with my partners here. It's not that we have anything against what you designed or created, but because of what we're regulated to follow and obey, and again, being a knockdown and starting from ground zero, it's got to conform. You can't go right off the rip, have a nonconforming building, just, that just sets the precedence and tone, and so number one's right off the bat. So if it's no on that, it's no on everything else.
There's nothing that Spence said that I disagree with from my colleagues here. I have a couple of notes to add. It seems to me that a smaller home could be designed and fit within the envelope that is a buildable envelope on the parcel. Someone said that the, this appears to be the least variance necessary. I, I think the, a more rational variance to seek, not that I would grant it, would have been on the side yard, pushing the house back, and get a side yard variance and honor the front yard variance, which then honors the average of the home's setback from the road, which is the aesthetic that we're trying to get at to begin with. So I don't think that this is the least variance that could be granted on the property. Notwithstanding that, you could build a compliant house on the parcel. You can't build this house on that house, on that property and be compliant. I do note also that this is two lots being, that were combined, which provides that large buildable envelope, which reduces or eliminates the practical difficulty with the topography. I own a house that's on a hill, and I understand retaining walls and dealing with neighbors because I'm the guy on the top of the hill, and my runoff goes on the neighboring properties. But my, my hill is more severe than what you've got here, and I appreciate wanting to save trees, but that's not one of the standards that we can use. Yeah, and that, that's all I have.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add to what everyone else has said, but I just, you know, the key thing to me is that this is a teardown. Unfortunately, there was a mistake made, you know, you, but for that, you might have designed a house that, and you can design a house that meets all the standards without requiring a variance. So I, I just, it's, it's not meeting the standards.
Okay. I believe the next step is to take a vote on it?
Yeah, motion and second, and then a vote, it's...
So I want to have a motion?
Motion to deny request.
Second?
I'd second that, just, we're denied because the application does not meet all of the applicable standards.
I file a motion to deny request because it does not meet all the five standards.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close? Okay. So denied, I'm sorry. I believe that is our last step in the process. Maybe we'll scroll back up to the top of my document here, make sure I'm not missing anything. Bear with me, there's lots of scrolling going on. I believe that's it, right?
More or less, just need a motion to adjournments.
So, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it for the evening, folks.
I'm going to YouTube, I have a quick question.
Sure. It's still recording.